Thank you, everyone. Will we be back in session? And we'll pick up with item number four. Mr. McCandless, would you like to introduce our speaker for One Big Sky Update, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Leading off, I believe, is going to be Lisa Harmon. I think she has an introductory statement, and then she'll introduce the additional speaker or speakers.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Harmon.
Good evening, Your Honor and counsel. Thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you, Mr. McCandless. I'm really happy to be here tonight and to welcome, well, Lisa Harmon, Executive Director of Downtown Billings Alliance, 2815 Second Avenue North. Sorry about that. Really happy to be here tonight and welcome Bob Dunn and Rob Robinson from the Hammus Company to welcome them back to Billings. I'd first like to share a few thoughts with you about the project. I've learned so much from this project, not so much about a building or a project, but about a team, a team of people who work diligently to build a better Billings, day in and day out, who show up undeterred and undefeated. These are business professionals and property owners, city and county officials, school district officials, cultural partners, nonprofit providers, and representatives from Tribal Leaders Council. And they comprise the people on our three boards, the DBA, the DBP, and the BID. And I have had the honor to serve them for about 13 years now, and they really deserve our respect. I'm proud of the work also that our DBA members have done in our TIF districts, the 1976 district, and the current one, that have brought us to where we are today, poised and ready. We've done about 275 projects total in these TIF districts. I know, it's amazing. And kudos to you and past councils that have led the way and made those decisions so that we could build a beautiful platform and framework for downtown Billings and for the City of Billings. And we're really proud of that. And it's not just we who recognize this, not just the great leadership that we have in our partner organizations at Big Sky Economic Development with Steve Arbuskow and his team, and the Billings Chamber of Commerce, John Brewer and his team, and other leadership groups. We really hear it from people coming to our city, and they recognize the great potential that we have as a regional, national, and national economic competitor and destination. I've learned that this is bigger, this project, than any one organization or group, and that we all, that we need all of us at the table. Our partners, our partner organizations, Steve Arbuskow from Big Sky Economic Development and John Brewer from the Chamber will add their thoughts after Mr. Dunn has done his presentation. We'll come back up for a couple of closing comments. But we're all ready to work toward what comes next, to take it to the next level and plan for a bright future for the City of Billings. We see this not as, again, a building or a project, but a broader economic plan that can change the current economic landscape and create economies that are critical to the future of our city and its citizens. We all enjoy the quality of life in Billings and all the attributes of our city, but we have to remember also that we live the economic narrative as well. And so, as partners, as economic developers and community organizers and builders, we ask ourselves, are we doing everything that we can with regards to economic growth, job creation, talent attraction and recruitment, and retention, tourism, art and culture, infrastructure improvement, meeting and civic plaza space, retail housing, the list goes on and on? Are we leading out with economic advantage in mind that would catalyze new growth, increase the tax base, and help Billings compete regionally and nationally? And what about our emerging leadership and up-and-coming generations who are engaged and hunger for change in a city that they've boldly chosen? These are the things that we have to think about and confront as we thoughtfully plan for the future. And this isn't about trying to be like other cities. It's really about creating our own sense of place, our own competitive niche, and about being the best Billings that we can be. Tonight, I urge full and fair consideration of the merits and benefits of this kind of plan and vision that Bob will share with you, and that moving forward, we would look to each other with strategic focus and partnership, or, excuse me, that we would work and look with each other with strategic focus and partnership in assuring a dynamic and exciting future. Transformation is not easy, and it takes the work of committed partners. I'd like to show, for your benefit and the benefit of the community watching, a short video, a short clip of the work of the Hammus Company in Allentown, Pennsylvania. It's really an exciting transformation. And Rob will get that going for us. Wonderful. I hope you enjoyed that. I enjoy seeing that. So, this morning, Bob was talking to some of our DBA members, and I could really envision what he was talking about when they started from ground zero in Allentown, Pennsylvania. So, I hope you enjoyed that little clip. And we're really grateful to have Rob and Bob here today. And so, I'd like to call and invite Bob Dunn from the Hammus Company up to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Dunn.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Good to be back in Billings, as we said we would be a few months ago when we were last here to see you. I appreciate Lisa's opening remarks. Hopefully, you found the video of Allentown to be of some interest. That is a project that we took from an idea to bring a plan forward, as we are this evening with you, in a period of about six weeks' time. From that point in time, it was about a little over one year later that we broke ground on the first project, the arena block, that you saw in that video. That is a project that moved at an incredibly rapid pace. And what's interesting to me, when I look back on that project, is the original ideas that were, that were set at a similar stage to where we are now have all come to life in a period of about five to seven years. And our planning horizon was about a 20-year planning horizon. So, in about, you know, a third the time, that community has realized the full build-out of that plan. The fiscal and economic impact and gain to that community is way beyond anything that we had forecast back then. You know, to this point in time, there's something, you know, upwards of a billion and a half, approaching $2 billion of new development in place or in planning, in a community, you know, when we started, was in desperate shape. And it's not just that the community was in desperate shape. You know, our national economy was as bad as it's been at any point in our lifetime. Nonetheless, we sort of accepted the challenge, put together a plan, and have executed the plan, and achieved way more than anyone believed was possible at that point in time. And so, we wanted to share that with you just as a, you know, as a reference point, that, you know, with the leadership, with the right plan, and with the drive and determination to get something like this done, it can be realized. And if it can be done in a community like Allentown, Pennsylvania, it can absolutely be done in a city like Billings, Montana. And I think, you know, maybe the most telling point in that whole video is that end caption where it says, "This is only the beginning." What has been realized there is driving momentum in that community that will far surpass any idea, any plan, or any financial forecast that we had set. And I would hope that the same can be accomplished here in Billings. You're starting way ahead of where Allentown, Pennsylvania started, and that I can say with confidence, based on the work that we've completed over these last few months. So, I just share that as an opening comment. Tonight, what I would hope to do is walk you through the work that we've been doing over these last several months, give you sort of our presentation of the fact and the ideas. I think tonight's discussion should really be about vision and opportunity. It's not about a specific literal plan that we've brought to you, and we'll ask for, you know, your support or your approval. We're not at that point. What we would like to do is share our ideas with you. I will then walk you through some thoughts that we have in terms of how best to move a process forward that can bring about a result like you just saw in Allentown, Pennsylvania. So, that's sort of the context of what I had hoped we could accomplish tonight. Over these last several months, we have done a lot of work, as we always do at the front end of these projects. We have learned a lot. I said the first time that we appeared before the council that it was way, way premature at that point in time for us to formulate any ideas or plans or opinions on what your opportunities and what your challenges might be here in Billings. I think we certainly have a much better feel for that at this point. And from both our experience and what we've learned here in Billings, I think we have some ideas that are, can be transformative for this community now and well into the future. And so, that's sort of the context that we bring to you tonight, is a plan that can be transformative and lead to very positive growth and economic drive in this community. So, if I can, I'd like to walk through the presentation. I'll try and, I know it's been a long evening already, I'll try and move through this quickly. There's a lot of information here. I won't take you through it all in great detail. We will provide you with a copy of our work this evening. I know that some of you wanted us to provide this ahead of this meeting. I felt it was important that we have the chance to explain the work that we've done first, and then we'll be happy to share with you a copy of our work when we wrap up the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, before we begin, I must ask, the focus this evening, obviously, is One Big Sky Center, and I appreciate that. The video was very impressive. Could you explain briefly? I'm very curious. Those are huge projects. Their main source of funding for those particular projects, private, public, what was the background?
I'll answer that as quickly as I can.
I know it's not an easy question, but I'm very curious.
The overwhelming majority of the money that's gone into Allentown is private capital. And the model that we cast in Allentown is very much the model that we would envision here in Billings, is, you know, an effort like this, a major transformative economic development strategy has to be led by private capital. Now, there are many challenges with that. You know, you, here in Billings, like Allentown, when you're talking about projects that are going to total hundreds of millions or billions of dollars, you know, that's more of an institutional level of investment. And institutional capital doesn't recognize communities like Billings and Allentown. Institutional capital is drawn to places like Atlanta, Washington, D.C., Seattle, Denver, Dallas, big markets where there's a bigger, you know, economy and where there's more growth opportunity, more investment opportunity. So, one of the challenges, I've mentioned this to you before, in situations like this and in Allentown, is to draw that private capital, you really have to prove out that there's a strategy that will be sound long-term. And part of building that strategy means you need to have a public partner. In the case of Allentown, at this point in time, we crafted what is referred to as the NIZ, Neighborhood Improvement Zone. The NIZ is an economic development tool that we created, that we got passed through the state legislature in Pennsylvania. And it basically is a tool that allows a capture of new taxes generated inside the district that would normally go to the State Department of Revenue. It basically follows that form and then brings much of that revenue back into the NIZ to support economic development. And the support comes in many forms, but generally speaking, those dollars go into building civic infrastructure. As you can imagine, a city, you know, like Allentown, a city like Billings, if you're going to attract this level of private investment and new construction, it's going to strain your ability to build infrastructure to support that. And so, oftentimes, we find there's a need for supplemental funding that can help support the public investment that then attracts the private investment. And you'll see some analysis that we've done here in Billings that follows this exact same model. What we generally find is that there's the public investment that does come into a project like this, that that percentage over time decreases considerably because as the private, you know, if the public investment is set here and the private investment is here, over time, as the private investment grows, the percentage of public funding as a percentage, you know, is decreasing. So, we see the same kind of a methodology here in Billings. So, the NIZ is the answer to your question. The NIZ was a state program that supported all of the economic development that you've seen in the video in Allentown. I should also mention, about two, three weeks ago, the next phase of the NIZ development in Allentown was kicked off. It's an area along the riverfront, which was always a part of our original 140-acre master plan. So, everything that you just saw is well underway. What you did not see is another major phase of development that's occurring now on the waterfront in Allentown, which is a, you know, a significant amount of development on its own. The other point I'll make with respect to Allentown is, two or three weeks ago, we were awarded the Urban Land Institute Global Gold Award for that project, which, you know, in our industry, the ULI is the gold standard. And we were given our highest award for that project, which, you know, it's not a statement about our firm necessarily, but I think it's really a statement about what was accomplished there, and I think it was well-deserved. You know, these are projects that compete internationally, and that's a project that was identified as being deserving of that award.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, as I said, there's a lot of information here. We'd be here until this time tomorrow night, I think, if I went through and read every bullet on the page. But I'll try and hit the highlights. So, you know, to open, as I said, this is really a discussion about vision and opportunity for Billings, the region, and the state of Montana. It's important to understand, our viewpoint on this is not that One Big Sky Center is a project any longer. We view it to be an economic development strategy. I felt this way when I first came here. I feel much stronger about this as we've completed some of our work, but we think the opportunity is much greater and much broader than a single project. And so, when we use the term "One Big Sky Center" from this point forward, it represents a major economic development strategy in downtown Billings, not a one-block-by-two-block project that was conceived of in its infancy. So, to get there, we view this as being transformative. For it to be successful, it really has to bring new visitation to the city. And I'll explain that as we go through the presentation. But all of the big projects that we've done, I know a number of you were at Lambeau Field before I was last here presenting to you. Another great example about driving visitation, there we grew visitation from 700,000 to upwards of 4 million visits a year. With visits comes spending, with spending comes tax base. So, that's an important statistic that we will always work toward on these major economic development initiatives. We'll talk a lot tonight about this anchoring strategy. It's one of your real opportunities here in Billings. We believe that in your urban core, you have the opportunity to leverage off important existing anchors that you have to really drive this transformation. This has to be sustainable. I'm going to move through a lot of this front-end information quickly so we can get into the economic discussion. That is always what these discussions come back to. We respect that and want to share with you some of our thoughts and ideas. Industry trends, you'll hear us talk a lot about this. We've done a good amount of research. The most important factor in terms of, you know, the analysis that we can bring to this project and that we learn as we analyze Billings is, we are rapidly moving to reurbanize this country at a pace that we've never seen before. You know, the generations before us suburbanized America. The generations now going forward are going to reurbanize this country. Certain communities are going to embrace that, like Allentown, and drive that change. You know, employers, residents, we talk a lot about the millennial generation. It's not just the millennial generation. This country is reversing the trends that have been in play for 20, 30, 40 years. And if a city does not embrace that, I would contend and argue that you will be a forgotten city in not that many years. Because the growth, the tax base, the jobs, the underpinnings of your economy are going to be dependent on your urban strategy. And so, when we talk about trends, there's 1,000 examples I could give you of where this is taking hold across the country, and you will have to make a decision about where do you want to fit in that spectrum. Allocation of risks and rewards, I'll probably never have a conversation here in Billings where there's not some tieback to what does this mean in terms of the fiscal, you know, realities of this project. And we'll be happy to share our beliefs on that. And then, the last point is, also one of the things that I took away from the first meeting I had here and every time I've been here since, you've got such a ripe opportunity to take the character of your downtown in this region and do something with it. You know, not every city has that opportunity. You do. You know, you've got a great urban character that is sort of poised to define a transformation of your downtown. Not that many cities have the opportunity to do that. Beyond that, you're then surrounded by, you know, some of the greatest geography and opportunities in this country that drive visitation. And so, part of what we've looked at is, how can you really harness that and make that the character-defining elements of your city and your future? So, that's kind of an introduction of how we see this vision. There's sort of four goals that we have identified in terms of where we think you can begin to direct this kind of an economic development strategy. Number one, it's really about creating new jobs and engaging an inspired workforce. One of the critical points that we've learned and that I think we all need to understand and think about is, you're going to turn over about 37%, 38% of your workforce in the next 10-plus years. That's an amazing statistic. Everybody wants to talk about job growth. Not that often does anyone talk about job retention. You know, 40% of your workforce that you have to turn over in what's going to be a very dynamic economy-looking to the future, that has a very strong orientation toward urban lifestyle, is something that cannot be ignored. I've talked with a number of your major employers in this community, among various different industries. Everyone speaks about the same thing, the challenges of retaining and recruiting, and the importance of the city, the urban lifestyle, as a part of that whole dynamic. And so, when we talk about jobs, it's not just new jobs, it's retaining and building on the workforce that you currently have. On top of that, you do have a modest amount of job growth, and that's a positive. I mean, every community wants to have job growth. But your challenge is going to be, how do you backfill the existing jobs and add new jobs on top of that? It will be a daunting challenge. Doesn't matter what city you're in. I mean, Rob and I are in Chicago the end of this week, working on a major project there. Chicago is struggling with these realities. So, it's coast-to-coast, cities of all sizes are facing this dilemma. How are we going to bring talent into our market, into our economy? You have to have a strategy to do that. Second goal that we identify is providing and driving meaningful economic and fiscal impact to the city, the county, and the state. And for us, that's really the yardstick here. You know, any project like this, first and foremost, we would argue, has to be driven by a return on investment decision. This is about strengthening your economy for the future. And at the end, I'll try and sort of frame up our real viewpoint on this, but when all is said and done, a strategy like this needs to build your economy and grow your tax base. There, too, these things are not going to just happen on their own over time. Most cities that we work in, you know, the curve on cost is growing at a faster pace than the curve on revenue. And so, this is a strategy to help close that gap and give you meaningful ways to build on your economic base down the road. Goal number three, I said earlier, is really about visitation, bringing more people and new people into your economy. If we take a buck from across town and we spend it on the other side of town, that dollar's already in your economy. If we can bring a dollar into the economy from outside of town, you've gained a dollar of new spending and a significant amount of new tax base with that. So, that's an important part of the formula. And then, lastly, you'll hear us use this term "lifestyle" a lot, but it's really about the demands of tomorrow, employers, residents, you know, civic interests, visitors. It's all about the lifestyle that is provided by that, any particular community. And this will make, I think, a little more sense as we go through the balance of the presentation. So, when I said, you know, "One Big Sky Center" is no longer a project, it's an economic development strategy, this map really gets at the essence of what we mean by that. It's our belief, based on the work that we've done, that your urban core should be looked at in the context of an overall, just like we did in Allentown, a district concept where you can leverage the powerful anchors that already exist in your community. What we mean there is the health and wellness district that runs north and south, the area in gold. You know, that is the center of your largest employment in this community and in the state that is poised for significant growth. The big regional medical centers like you have here in Billings are going to continue to grow. They need to grow to survive and to thrive. That is a powerful anchor in this community that drives significant job growth, tax base, economic gain, and a draw from a broad regional area. It's as stable an element as you can have in your economy, and we believe it should be one of the anchoring elements that defines your new downtown, if you want to think of it in that context. To the south, the area in dark blue and light blue is what we think of as the lifestyle district. This is the core of your downtown. This is the core of your downtown. It's our strong belief that you need an anchor in the core of downtown as well. Your best opportunity to realize that is going to be with the New Convention Center. We've analyzed the work that has been done, the HVS study. We have a lot of experience in this type of venue, sports and entertainment. And it's our belief that to do that and to do it well, to have the greatest impact for the city of Billings in Montana, that you have to be looking at building a facility larger than any other facility that exists in Montana, so that you can compete for meetings, conventions, and other events from outside the state, within the Mountain States region, and nationally. It's our belief that that is your best opportunity to anchor this Lifestyle District, the blue and purplish area, and create your second-important anchor in your downtown. These projects are always driven by an anchor. To the extent that you can have multiple anchors, we think you can drive, you know, the momentum of this kind of a strategy at a much faster pace. In Allentown, the anchor was the arena. Most of what you saw had nothing to do with an arena. Most of what you saw was triggered by the fact that the arena was the anchor that really ignited downtown. And the arena block, as we call it, was not just an arena, it was an arena. Tied into that was a major medical center, a hotel, and a whole retail and dining/entertainment footprint. So, it's our belief that that, as a second anchor, will have a powerful impact in driving this urban strategy as we look to the future. I was asked at several of our earlier meetings with you, you know, what are we basing our thoughts and opinions on? We've done a good amount of assessment of the market, sort of all aspects of the market, from sort of normal demographic data, population, spending, those types of things, on up to analyzing the core markets and commercial office, residential, retail, hospitality. I think we have a very good understanding and perspective on your economy and the opportunities that we see for growth in your economy. There's some very positive statistics and data that fall out of this type of analysis, and there are some very challenging realities that you come to realize as well. The things that jump out at us, you know, you've got a, you're obviously a mid-sized city, we view that as a positive. We think there's a lot of opportunity in the middle-tier cities in the future. A lot of people, a lot of the trends that we see nationally now are people wanting to move away from the large employment centers, don't want to fight traffic, don't want to deal with the expense of major cities, what have you. They want to have a lifestyle, they want an urban lifestyle, but they also want to be in a setting like this, where they can enjoy the outdoors and the recreational activities that you have. Another one of my impressions when I first came to Billings was, if you can harness this urban strategy with the great outdoor environment that you have, you've got something to offer that not very many communities in this country really have to offer. And so, a lot of the positive data that we see, you've got population growth, you have job growth, you have a good diversity to your economy. We believe you're going to see demand in the sectors I talked about, office, residential, and what have you. And you have an urban landscape that is sort of unencumbered. A lot of the challenge that we see in communities are, the anchors have been built, they've been built oftentimes in the wrong location, meaning they're too far apart to create any real synergy in a downtown. You don't have that problem, that dilemma. These two anchoring elements that we've identified, the Medical District and the Lifestyle District, are in a walkable footprint, 1,200 to 1,400 feet. That's a huge advantage. You want this to be pedestrian-oriented. Those are some of the positives. On the opposite end of the spectrum, the challenge is, you are an aging community. This map shows basically a breakdown of, you know, the aging workforce, and dark blue represents, you know, the dynamic that you don't necessarily want to see, which is basically people exiting the workforce, which is usually as a result of retirement. So, you're challenged here in that you've got an aging workforce, your working population is below national averages, your household incomes are somewhat below national averages. So, if I'm a younger person looking for a place to move to, and household incomes come up lower on the scale, that means something to me. There are other communities where, you know, the cost of living is not any higher than Billings, but the household incomes are higher. These are the kinds of things that you can have a measurable impact on with the right strategy. And so, the point in all of this is, we see more positive than we do negative, but every community has some balance between positive and negative. In Allentown, it was, you know, so heavily weighted toward the negative, you know, a lot of people said we were nuts for even trying, but, you know, I'll let the record speak for itself there. We like most of what we see here in Billings. It's my belief personally that the challenges that you face are challenges that you can easily, not easily, you can address, and you can close these gaps in a meaningful way if you put together the right economic development strategy that will grow your tax base, improve household incomes, employ more of your workforce, attract younger professionals, the kinds of things that fall out of this type of a strategy. So, much of this is in the book. We've done a lot more analysis than what we have on the screen here or in the book, but it gives you a sense of the type of analysis that we do. And I would just ask that you recognize the fact that the reason that we do this type of analysis is, the end of the day, what we have to be prepared for is, when you look back at us and say, okay, we set a vision together, we followed this process of putting an economic development strategy in place, we've activated a project, we have to be prepared that you're going to look back to us and say, are you prepared to invest as we invest? So, we have to be confident that the answers, the ideas that we're giving you, that we're prepared to back up with our own capital. So, we do this type of analysis for a reason, and it's ultimately, you know, to elevate our confidence that we'll commit our capital and we can raise the type of capital that it will take to make a project like this a reality. The last slide that we'll talk about is this slide with respect to the market analysis. We've all seen this, this comes out of the HVS study. We've spent a lot of time looking at their work, their analysis, their recommendations. There's a lot there, very good study. And the conclusions that we've taken from that study are basically that, if you look at this chart, the centers that you want to compete with are places like Bismarck, Fargo, Rapid City, Sioux Falls. We need to understand that, you know, your communities that are in your peer set, that you compete for, for visitation, for employment, for employers, for patients, et cetera, they have built facilities of the type and size that we're talking about. When you look elsewhere on above and below on the scale here, particularly in Montana, you know, your average facility size is probably 15,000 square feet. That's not a convention center. That's a meeting space. That's a glorified ballroom. That's not a negative, you need those spaces. But if you want to compete at a different level, you have to have the venue that supports your ability to draw that kind of visitation, that kind of meeting, et cetera. Montana does not have a venue that can draw that type of organization today. It doesn't exist in the state. You're losing all of that economic gain to states that you compete with. And this is going to be one of the fundamental questions that has to be answered here is, how important is this to growing and strengthening not just your economy, but the economy of the state of Montana? And the simple fact is, you can't compete if you don't have the space that supports the use. And there's more work that needs to be done in really scoping out, you know, what will a convention center mean economically? What is the right sizing of a facility? What is the right location of a facility like that? But we would argue, and we would argue strongly, that it needs to be the anchor that unlocks the opportunity in this Lifestyle District in the core of your downtown. So, from this analysis, ultimately, what we have to arrive at is an estimate of demand. What is it that we believe can be built in this community, in your downtown, as we look to the future? And so, there's different ratios, there's different statistics that we draw from. We have not gone out and done the primary research that will come in the next phase of work that could be done on this, but this is a good estimate of what we believe the program can be for this urban core, this economic development strategy. And so, we've broken it. The middle column, we call Phase 1, the right-hand column, Phase 2, and then it totals in the left-hand column. And what this represents is, our estimate at this stage of the programmatic build between hotel, retail, dining, entertainment, office, bioscience, med tech, we also use that term, healthcare, residential, senior living, mixed-use infill, that's basically retooling. Much of the real estate that exists in the city, that's not new construction, that's redevelopment of existing real estate, a convention center, civic uses, and then parking. The reason this is important is, the next set of slides that we'll get into talks about fiscal and economic impact. It's all driven off what gets built. You know, this program represents, you know, a significant amount of new investment in your community, and we estimate this over about a 15-, 18-, 20-year period of time. So, this is not all new build happens in five to seven years. Now, I don't want to contradict myself. I, of course, believe it could happen at a much faster pace, but when we run these schedules like we did in Allentown, we try to be conservative. We try to be conservative because the economic modeling, you know, we want it to be on the safe side, you know? If we stretch it out over a longer period of time, it's just more conservative underwriting. And so, 15 to 20 years seems like a long time. These big economic initiatives do take time to gel and gain momentum. Allentown is sort of the, you know, the case study in how you want to see something like this come together, and it builds its own momentum. The key is, you've got to start with the right anchors. If the anchors are done well and done right and done correctly, I would expect that you could pace this well ahead of a 15- to 20-year schedule. But having said that, all of our modeling has been done on a 15- to 20-year schedule. What that represents is something approaching 3 million square feet of development in a 15-plus-year period of time. And we'll show you in a minute what 3 million square feet of new development represents. So, again, the concept is creating these two companion districts, the Lifestyle District, built around a new convention center, the Health and Wellness District, built around your two medical institutions, as well as the Educational Core further to the north. We sort of fit that in the concept of health and wellness. Some would probably argue it deserves its own heading, but, you know, the semantics shouldn't slow us down. The Health/Wellness District really should involve and engage higher education. So, again, this is the map blown up, so you can see it and understand it a little bit better. This is a footprint that we've roughly identified. You know, working together, these kind of land-use plans will evolve and change. You know, working with city planning, we would come to learn that there's certain areas of downtown that you either want to make a part of, or you don't want to make a part of a plan like this. But based on our initial analysis and having done a lot of this work elsewhere, this is the, sort of the general boundary that we think should define this economic development zone. And so, what can happen here? Convention and civic spaces, again, that needs to be an anchor. This is an example of a facility that was just built in Provo, the Utah Valley Convention Center. Again, we have to understand that the communities that you compete against are building this infrastructure. You can't compete if you don't have this type of infrastructure. This facility represents just under 100,000 square feet, I think it's about 85,000 square feet of built program area, and it is driving a transformation of that community and will continue to for, you know, a period of years. Some of the other things that we won't spend a lot of time talking about tonight, but it's important to understand, and another time we'll share with you a study we're doing in Chicago right now, that the urban environment tomorrow is going to be radically different than it is today. The type and style and design of office space, of residential units, of retail space, of civic spaces, we're beginning to see trends that you never could have imagined before, that are going to define the type of spaces that companies and people occupy in the future. Residential, as an example. You know, people want to be a part of a thriving urban neighborhood, and the unit sizes just continue to get compressed. People don't want all that space. Much of where they live and socialize, you know, that's what they value. It's the space, you know, in the environment that they want to live in. All you have to do is walk almost any college campus in the country today, and you'll get an understanding of where housing is going tomorrow. It's about the urban scale and amenities. What's less important is the, you know, the physical envi... I don't want to say it's less important, but what's getting compressed is the living environment. It's less expensive, people don't want the big spaces, and so, the trend is toward urbanizing so that they can get, they've got the outlets for, you know, entertainment, dining, et cetera, that they do out-of-house. And it's, again, it's not just the millennial generation. I could show you all kinds of data that basically shows this urban housing gap closing from, you know, the early 20s, you know, now that's reaching up into the early 30s, and people that used to move on in housing to more of a rental or a multifamily model, when they wanted to sell the big home, now people in their early 50s, mid-50s, early 60s are wanting to move into an urban environment. So, those trends are happening all over this country. If you're not meeting those trends and developing the type of real estate that people will want to occupy, the office space of tomorrow is going to be very different than the office space of today. So, it's not just a question of creating new space, it's altering the dynamics of the space that people occupy today. Same holds true with office. You know, office spaces are getting retooled and reconfigured, and the social area is part of these mixed-use urban environments, that is where employers of tomorrow are being, you know, forced to go to address what it takes to attract and retain the workforce. Allentown is a shining example of that. There wasn't one employer in the whole Lehigh Valley 10 years ago that would have ever thought of moving to downtown Allentown. Today, that is where the employees want to live, that is where they play, that is where employers are going to be in a position to attract and recruit the best and brightest minds in that community. And you are facing the exact same dilemma. Healthcare, I mean, all of these programmatic areas are seeing real change in just the physical environment. And so, cities like Billings face this reality that you have to redefine your office space, your residential, your retail, and what have you, because that is what businesses and people of tomorrow are going to demand. So, we'll skip forward, and you'll see these next few slides. So, again, back to the map, the white boxes now represent about what One Big Sky Center was contemplated to be in its original context. It was a footprint of about that size. And I should say with this map, there's no, you know, there's no, we're always cautious when we put these maps together, that they should not be read literally. This is not a plan that shows exactly what should occur block by block. It's an illustration of the volume of real estate that we expect there will be demand for over time. So, it's a representative illustration, but if that's where One Big Sky Center started, our Phase 1 build-out, if you recall that schedule, Phase 1, the columns, Phase 1, Phase 2, this represents something just under 1 million square feet, built out over a period of probably five, maybe seven years. And then at full build-out, you're looking at this level of impact on your city. That's about 3 million square feet of development, some of which is retooling existing real estate. It's our strong belief that there will be demand for this level of new build in this market. If the right strategy and vision... market if the right strategy and vision and economic model can be put together to support So on to what always seems to be the real, you know, point of discussion. How do you get there? What is the financial model on which a plan like this can be put together? And so, you know, in our mind, you're looking at something that will involve in total over time, a billion and a half, maybe approaching $2 billion of development. Now, that's where we started in Allentown, and we got there in five to seven years. Allentown is going to way outpace, you know, any growth forecast that we ever ran. You know, do I believe that you could outpace that here in Billings? I absolutely do, but again, for the sake of being conservative, we're modeling it a little bit on the conservative side. What this slide represents is what we expect the relationship could be between public and private investment. The top pie chart shows a private investment of about $300 million and a public investment that could approach $150 million. You know, a significant public investment. What does that go toward? It's all civic infrastructure, convention center, parking, you know, building out your civic infrastructure, which is everything from land acquisition, remediating sites, utilities, urban landscape, I mean, all the things that you need to have in order to build an economic development plan like we're talking about. What happens over time is that public contribution likely will grow somewhat, and this is an illustration. I mean, we believe these are values that would be consistent with a plan like this, but we need to do a lot more work to pinpoint these numbers. The bottom chart shows over time, as you begin to work toward that full build-out of something approaching 3 million square feet, the private investment is going to grow at a very rapid pace, and the public investment more or less stays static, so that the relationship of private to public dollars goes from a 2/3, 1/3 to about a 90-10 on full build-out. And that is very consistent with what we've seen in Allentown and other projects like this. To be successful, this has to be a public-private partnership. There's just no other way of achieving something of this scale and impact, and a public-private partnership that's not made up just of, you know, a relationship between interests like us and the city, it would have to involve a meaningful participation with the state of Montana. So you ask then, you know, how do you break these costs down? Again, this is all in the book. You'll get a copy of all of this information. The breakdown of these costs follow what are our typical cost categories between land, construction, FF and E is furnishings, this type of stuff. Development costs are your soft costs, financing costs, TI allowances, that's just your tenant improvements, contingency, those are the, you know, the private components of costs. The public components are the convention center, the civic infrastructure, and then parking is inevitably always a big number. To achieve this level of density, you know, there is structured parking that will have to be built. Seems like every day I'm asked, you know, driverless cars, and, you know, are people still going to drive their car to work? I'm not yet a believer that, you know, we're all going to get rid of our cars anytime soon. You happen to have big cars in Montana, so you need slightly larger parking structures than what we see in some other areas. But this is a good breakdown of the estimated costs that we envision will come into play here, broken down between public and private costs. This is an important slide that says a lot more than what the few numbers show here, but one of the things that we've been analyzing in the market is market conditions. That is a statement about sort of your general rate structure in the market today. In other words, hotels, your higher-end hotels are, you know, generating $154 a night average daily rate. I'm sure that some of my associates in the room in the hotel business would argue, maybe that rate's overstated a bit. We own hotels, we always like to say the rates are overstated, but regardless, we think it's a good representation of where rates stand today. Your office product in this market, a $16 triple-net rent is probably the higher end of your market today. And then on the residential side, $1,500 average rent per month is probably also a little bit on the high side. The point of this slide is the next line. In order to support new development, there is a gap that exists. The cost of new construction, the cost of buying land, the financing realities that come with building new, mean, you have to get a higher rent than what your market will currently support. And this is the gap. You know, you've done different financings here in the city, you're accustomed to this term, the gap. The gap in this case is real. You've got about a $35, $40 a night average daily rate gap in hospitality. You've got a, I think, all of a $6 a square foot gap in commercial office, and you've got about a 10% to 20% gap, maybe more, in residential. Now, what we've seen in other examples is as you start to gain traction and new development is occurring, markets mature pretty quickly. I mean, we had this problem at a much greater level in Allentown. The gap was a whole lot wider than the gap that you have here. Today, the new building that's occurring, I mean, all that new building that you're seeing, isn't occurring because apartment units aren't leasing up and office space isn't being occupied. It's occurring because the demand is to locate downtown. And so, rents have very naturally come up at a very rapid pace in the case of Allentown. Same thing will happen here, but what you need to get the market to a point of maturity is you've got to get the anchors built, you've got to start some of that infill development. You frankly have to transform your downtown. You have to prove to people that, you know, there's life and energy and momentum building downtown, and that's where we want to live, and that's where businesses want to locate. If you create that level of demand, your rents will rise. Like I said, I mean, you saw a massive amount of development that is occurring as we speak in Allentown, and like I said, it's not because that space is not being occupied. That's what a public-private partnership of this type can realize. So when it comes to, you know, the economic realities of this type of public-private partnership, this is the page that it probably all boils down to. And so, what we're showing you here is between Phase One and full build-out, where you're growing from a million square feet to 3 to 4 million square feet, with an investment of, you know, something approaching $1 billion and a half to $2 billion, with visitation growing from a million to millions of new visits, heavily driven by a new convention center, you're gaining economic output annually of hundreds of millions to billions of dollars. And these are all measurable, this isn't just a chart, there's a lot of data that falls behind this chart. These are all measurable realities. Employment, you know, you're talking about thousands of new jobs. Earnings is an important statistic. A lot of the tax base that will be driven by this is driven off jobs. You know, that's where you get the greatest economic gain is growth in jobs, fiscal gain, I should say, new tax base gain. So off that growth in jobs, that translates to significant amounts of annual earnings off of which we can measure fiscal impact, new taxes. The bottom line is probably the punchline. Fiscal impact, read that to me, net new taxes. With this kind of strategy, you'll quickly realize tens of millions of dollars a year in new taxes between the city, the county, and the state. And that's really where we want to drive this evaluation, is if we can help you gain this type of tax base, you're going to see an economic fiscal impact, new taxes to the city and the state of something at about $1 billion and a half over time for an investment of, let's call it, $200 to $250 million if you go back to those pie charts. That's approaching a 10 to 1 return on investment. In our world, that is a very high ratio. Most of these economic development initiatives, some, it's a one-to-one relationship. You know, if the public puts in $1 million, it hopes to get $1 million back out through a variety of channels. You're doing very well if you're three or four to one. That would be considered very, very good. If you're pacing above four to one, that would be an exceptional result. And there's a variety of reasons why this model that we've run is reaching to a higher return on public dollars than what most of these kinds of projects realize, and it's partly the public investment that we've targeted in this evaluation is lower for the amount of private investment that we're seeing, and we believe that's valid. What I'm getting at is, the anchors that you need to build and the civic infrastructure that you need to build can be highly concentrated, and you're working off existing anchors. This is why we feel the medical district can be so important. That infrastructure is there. What we need to figure out is a strategy to build from those core institutions and better unify that district with your downtown. So you have a lot of the existing infrastructure already in place, which means you don't have to invest at the level that a community like Allentown had to invest in. Your return for a dollar of public money should be measurably higher than many economic development initiatives around the country. And so, when we first saw that, you know, your tendency is to do one of two things. Your first tendency is to say, well, let's argue that the public contribution ought to be higher, because you've got room there. But, you know, in all honesty, I don't think that has to be the case here. I think the investment that could come and should come from the public to drive the private investment that we're talking about can be held to a, I'd like to say, a more manageable level. You know, you start talking about tens of millions of dollars in public investment, most people would say, well, what's manageable about that? You know, $1 million is a big investment. Any amount of investment, public or private, is a big investment. But what we're getting at here is, where can you drive return on investment that is most meaningful and most impactful to your local economy and the statewide economy? We've spent a good amount of time on this, we do a lot of this work. You know, I think you can view this, you know, this is a starting point, but these numbers are very real, and the impact on the community long-term, I expect, could only grow from here if the right structure and the right strategy and the right investment is made. So, you know, that's hopefully a fairly rapid summary of the work that we've done. If you recall, when we first started with you, we said, you know, we've got a lot of experience at this, there's a lot of things on first impression that attracted us to Billings. We felt it was worth making an investment of our time and our dollars to begin to work through a process of understanding what the opportunity might be, and we shared this graphic with you at that point in time. What this graphic represents is a fairly consistent process that we worked through on these projects, and the green zone is the third quarter and fourth quarter of 2017. This is exactly what we showed you then, and we said, look, let us, on our nickel, let us invest the time and the dollars to put this strategy together, and we'll come back to you with our findings. And that's really what tonight is about. It begs the question, where do we go from here? And what we have outlined and the process, the thought process that we've had is, the next step is what's shown as Phase Two and Phase Three here, which is ultimately getting you to a complete development plan. I know in one of our earlier meetings here, we shared with you examples of the strategic plan that was put together for the Green Bay Packers, and what was done for the Destination Medical Center with Mayo Clinic in Rochester. I know I shared a number of other examples, but to do this and do it well, you really have to take that next step, you have to move into that phase. And this is just a simple graphic that shows what that represents, what that effort, what that work product would need to be. It's taking these ideas and really putting together a definitive plan to go forward. And so, the light blue represents that Phase Two column, a work plan that we would outline to take the next step together in this public-private partnership. And when I say together, I mean ourselves, you know, your economic development core in the community, you've got some great organizations that have done a lot of things very, very successfully that I believe will want to partner with us in this respect, and we need to have the city as sort of the third leg of that stool. Ultimately, we have to build a plan that, you know, works for all parties, and ultimately we have to have something that we can take to the state of Montana. This is a process that we've worked with very successfully, and I think it would lead to, has the potential to lead to great success here. And so, the types of things that would come into play next year in that first blue column are really putting together the public outreach strategy. You know, you can't develop a plan like this, you know, and memorialize it in any way the way we've gone at it thus far. This is our work. You know, we've not had the involvement of the city, city planning, we have not had the opportunity yet for the outreach with community groups and stakeholders downtown and throughout the region. We've had good dialogue with the state of Minnesota, or state of Minnesota, state of Montana, I'm going to Minnesota tomorrow, so jumping ahead. We've had a good dialogue that has started there, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So it starts with the outreach, further developing the program. You saw our Phase One, Phase Two, a lot of work has to be done to further refine, you know, what will drive demand, what will need to be built here, fiscal and economic impact. We've done a first pass at that, that's all the numbers that you just saw. That needs a lot of development to bring it to a point where you or we can really begin to think intelligently about any level of public and private investment. There's a lot of engineering work that needs to be done, transportation, and what's your civic infrastructure? You know, do you have the utilities that can support this type of growth? Land use analysis, everything from what sites should be and can be developed, what sites can't, what does your zoning allow for, what alterations might have to occur there. And then the last part, market research and analysis. One of the next things we would normally do is get in and do what we call primary research, which is, you know, sort of hand-to-hand combat, the direct surveys, the types of things we haven't done at this level. This is more of a macro assessment of the markets. If all is well, at the end of the second quarter, you would expect to go into the next phase, which is really putting together the definitive master plan, organizing the legal documents that you will need to ultimately take a structure like this forward, getting into architectural design and engineering, beginning your entitlement process, putting together the governance and legal structure, organizing a true finance plan, a marketing program, and an operations plan. Another time, I can explain in much greater detail what all of those things mean, but to truly advance this, all of those things and many more have to come together. And so, as we've been working on this and thinking about, you know, where do you go from here, what does, hopefully, what does this effort give you? I hope it gives you the ability to look into the future and see an opportunity, an opportunity that can do all of the things that I've mentioned here, from the economic realities to the job, you know, the support for growing jobs and retaining jobs in the community, really creating an authentic definition of your downtown, building at the size and scale that we've talked about. You know, that's really what we hope to accomplish with the effort thus far. If the city has the appetite to continue this process, we have some suggestions in terms of how best to move this process forward from here. We'll share with you our work tonight. Obviously, this will be made available to others in the community that have interest in seeing it. We're happy to do that. It is our work at this point in time, it's largely our ideas, and we would welcome the opportunity to engage with the city and the community to go forward and really build on this plan. To get there, we would suggest that we come back to you after you've had a chance to digest this in short order and provide you with a term sheet that would describe the process to go through 2018, to address all the things that are outlined in the blue columns there. And we would expect that if a term sheet could be organized between ourselves, your economic development organizations, and the city, that define the responsibilities that we will all have, we would propose that there's a shared investment. we will all have, we would propose that there's a shared investment to do that work. And we would propose that, you know, we would provide you with, you know, the private expertise, the market expertise from our standpoint to help organize and drive this. It's my belief that if we had a term sheet in front of you, you know, over the course of the next couple of weeks, that over the next 60 days, we could go from that term sheet, if we had agreement on that, to an agreement that we could use to work through 2018 with the expectation that by this time next year, we have jointly authored and developed, you know, a work product that will have much more weight behind it than what we have here. So that's been our thinking in terms of how do we progress from here? I know next Monday, you have a formal council meeting. If this made some sense, we would probably suggest that maybe we extend our current agreement that we have around the MOU for a period of 60 days, if it's of interest to the council to look at getting to a term sheet and then potentially working through this process as you look into 2018. So that's been our thought in terms of how you organize to move forward from the type of work that we've done here. And I'll leave you with sort of one last thought, and then happy to answer any questions that you might have. We've had the good fortune of being able to bring our experience, having done this in a lot of cities, large and small, you know, from coast to coast. I think we have a very good understanding of what is going to drive success in communities in the future. I think we've also had the good fortune of seeing what doesn't work. You know, there's as many good lessons there as there are in what has worked. I think when we assemble that body of work and we come to a new community and you make observations, I think there's some real value in that. And the most significant observation that I would make about Billings is, I believe you are at a crossroads. And I believe the decisions that you will make as a community and as leaders of the city are in one of two directions. You can choose, whether it's through this process or another, to build a plan, organize a plan, and support a plan, and invest in that plan, and really drive your city's future. Set a vision and realize that vision. There's absolutely no reason that the city of Billings and the state of Montana cannot achieve that. There's absolutely no reason at all. In most respects, you have a head start over what a lot of communities are facing today. So you've got a lot of positives, you know, sort of in your arsenal. That's the left turn. If you choose not to do that, that is a decision as well. And this is the dynamic that I think we need to bring forward in Billings, that not, you know, if you said, look, it's too much effort, it's too much time, it's too many dollars, whatever the case may be. The alternative decision is a decision not to invest in your city, not to invest in your infrastructure, not to invest in the people and the businesses that are going to drive your economy in the future. And ultimately, that is a decision where I think we have to stand up in a very open manner, accept and acknowledge the point that what you've decided to do in the alternative, if you turn right, is to put the burden of the city's future on your existing taxpayers. The only way the city can advance without a plan to really grow and mature is to put that burden someplace. City government is not getting any less expensive in time. You know, the strength of your education, of your city streets, of all the things that the city has to support, police, fire, you name it. You know, I heard discussion earlier about, you know, what can you afford to build in terms of new infrastructure for the city? If you don't have a strategy to grow the tax base and you don't embrace this kind of opportunity, then you've made the alternative decision. And that can only mean that you're going to put greater burden on your taxpayers today to shoulder that burden into the future. So oftentimes, these projects get airborne, and there's a lot of discussion around public investment and civic contribution and what have you, and people will want to, you know, they oftentimes have a mindset of, we don't want to grow or we don't want to invest. Well, if that's the case, that's a decision only that you, the city, can make about your future. But I think we have to be honest about saying, what does that mean in the alternative? What that means in the alternative is we've made a decision to burden our taxpayers at a higher level. And there's lots of evidence to support that around the country. Unless you have a plan to decrease your cost of operation over time, there is no alternative if you don't have a means and a strategy to grow your tax base. So, you know, as we've had the good fortune of getting to know you and getting to know a good number of people around the city, obviously, we would advocate that you pick the path that gives you the best opportunity to position your city to truly be one of America's great cities of tomorrow. There's nothing that we have seen that doesn't put you in a position to cause that to happen and to cause that to happen, you know, in the near term and in a way that we believe you can meet, if not exceed, all of the financial forecasts that we've set based on this preliminary analysis. So I hope you find this to be helpful. We have copies for all of you this evening. We're going to transmit this by email tomorrow. And we appreciate the time and the opportunity that you've given us.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. You've done a very fine job. I question if the 60-day on MOU is going to be enough time?
Are you asking for my opinion on that?
I know you're willing to give it, that's for sure.
Personally, I think it's plenty of time. I think the nature of this agreement... Can you go to that next slide, Rock? Do you have that scope of work in here? Go back then. You know, the nature of what we would be agreeing to is, you know, we'd all have some responsibilities, but really, this is a, it's a planning effort. You know, it's not an agreement that's going to have, you know, project funding and that type of thing at this stage. It's really a planning process. You know, I will tell you from our standpoint, you know, we would have to be prepared to invest, you know, well above any investment that you would make. And for us, it's probably going to approach a seven-figure investment. You know, that's not an insignificant bite at the apple at this stage. But I've, you know, I wouldn't be here tonight if I didn't feel comfortable that we would, you know, with the right partnership, that we would certainly entertain that kind of an investment to move into the next phase of this effort.
Very good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have questions. We'll begin over here. Councilman, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great presentation. Love it all. Obviously, knew it was going to come down to financing and everything else. To move forward with this piece, to get the agreement to even move forward for the study, what are you thinking for the city? I mean, hundreds of thousands, million? I mean, ballpark it, and I'm not going to hold you to it.
I'm told that a lot, and somehow I always seem to be held to these numbers.
I'm on record, we won't hold you to it.
Fair enough. You know, I think there's a couple answers to the question. I think for us, it's a million-dollar-plus investment. I think from a community standpoint, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. What portion of that the city might bear, I couldn't answer. It's not millions of dollars, but it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
For which groups are you thinking hundreds of thousands if the city's not going to bear at all? You talking state and county and everything?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've had some discussion with your economic development leadership in the community. I'll let them, I think they're going to have some comments when I'm done. I'll let them offer their thoughts on whether this is something that they might consider When I, you know, if you ask, we'll provide the term sheet and we'll lay it out in clear detail so you know what that investment would be and what the end product would be. You know, I wish these things didn't cost what they do. But to do it and do it right and to put you in a position where you can truly drive something like this forward, a lot of work has to be done. And I think we know how to do it well and do it efficiently. You know, you can burn through dollars in this process if you're not mindful of it. I will also say, you know, we don't need the practice at this. We do an awful lot of this, and we do it where we feel there's opportunity to then move on. And, you know, where I recoup that investment is if we're successful together and we get on to building, you know, some of these anchoring projects that we'd like to see become a part of this reality. I should have mentioned, when I was explaining the program and the phasing of this, one of the things that we would do next year is to advance a project or a series of projects that we would like to see and be a part of as the catalyst to jumpstart this development. So it's not just a lot of, you know, planning and analytics. There's going to be real project development that occurs in that period of time as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, completed. It's Councilman Friedel.
I don't really have many questions. It's more of a statement. I appreciate you bringing the information to us. I think this is well thought out, well planned. I'm sure my counterpart here, Mr. Sullivan, will agree with me that I think if this had been what was presented to us at the beginning of this whole project, I think you would have had a swell of more support from the community. I think that's one of the biggest issues when it came in here. So I appreciate the fact that you did your due diligence, you come and asked us to plan. I do believe this is another economic driver that we need to seriously look at as this council and as a part of this community, because this is an alternate way without having to increase the taxes burden, but at the same time, spreading it out by bringing in more increase in there. So I appreciate the fact that you did this, you did take the time, you got us the information. I am seriously looking forward to looking at that book to see all the details you've come up with. That's my statement, more of a question for you. Thank you.
I appreciate that. You know, I just follow on to that with a general statement. You know, these big projects, they follow a somewhat meandering path at times. You know, I can't speak to what occurred before we got here. Not unusual in these kinds of efforts, but, you know, we felt at the beginning that we had a lot of experience and a lot of value we could bring to the table. And I told you at our first meeting together that, you know, let us undertake this effort, and we'll share with you our findings. That's what we're doing. It's not been a small undertaking on our behalf. I stopped looking at our time sheets a while ago because they were adding up at a rapid pace. So, you know, we've taken a very serious approach to this, and I hope that you'll find, you know, that there's some good thinking that's gone into it.
And I appreciate the fact that it's a long-term plan. It's not something that's shortcoming. I do like the fact that you did think about the next 20 years, how we're going to use our anchors, how we're going to accomplish this kind of goal. And it's definitely something I'm very interested in, because I think this is a plan that if we do it effectively, we do it correctly, that it could definitely be a huge source of revenue, and thank you.
We'll go over this side and then come back, Councilman Yakovich.
Thank you, Honored. Thank you for your presentation. You're light years away from, from me in this area, so I'm humbled and I respect what you're doing here. Nonetheless, they elected me to ask some questions. You caught my interest, first of all, state of Montana and some kind of relationship. I'm curious, what did you mean by that?
As we've looked at your market, meaning, you know, sort of the Billings region, you are a significant regional draw from outside the state of Montana, you know, in a sort of a half-a-day's drive time. That tells us a lot. That tells us that you have the ability to pull regionally. And so we naturally then look for what opportunities are there to leverage that. And that's what, you know, you've been doing the work on the convention center, but we quickly came to the conclusion that that's your best opportunity to drive new inputs into the economy. And so then you step back and say, all right, well, what infrastructure has to be built to support that? It's a convention center. To build the size and scale of convention center that we really believe you need here, that's a statewide asset. The fiscal and economic impact that will be generated from that will benefit the state first and the city of Billings second. Now, I'm not putting any more or less importance, but it just, when you scale that, the taxes generated will swing more heavily to the state than to the city. The overall economic gain from this kind of a major economic development initiative will swing more heavily to the state than to the city. So it's our belief that if this is going to be Montana's most significant economic development initiative undertaken to date, that it's going to require a partnership with the state of Montana in every manner that it will require a partnership with the city of Billings. Exactly what that means, I can't answer. Give us a year and follow that process, and we'll have an absolute answer for that. But that's what I meant, is I wouldn't define this by, you know, the breadth of the partnership being private interests, your economic development, community, and the city. It's going to, we believe it's going to have to reach beyond that.
Another question. The, did you read the article in the paper, the Gazette?
I did. Well, I should, if it was with respect to certain form of public financing, I did. If there's another article, I'd need to know exactly what that was.
This one here was, as Billings considers one Big Sky Center, does downtown have the TIF funding to make it happen?
I did read that.
He read it. Just want to make sure.
It's okay, Mike.
Well, you know, some of this is the elephant in the room, and, you know, I'm sure we all get calls from different people in different ways. I'm intrigued, again, and I think I brought this up before, the people who call me are those who have a lot more money than I and invested in the community in different ways, who bring up concerns, and not just Mr. Buchanan, obviously. But could you address that a little bit? The idea of, we're looking at TIF funding to support this generally? When you talk about public funds, am I looking at that properly?
Well, TIF is a tool. It's not the only tool. It probably gets the most attention in situations like this, but, you know, I think it's premature to start to say, this is a discussion about TIF, or this is all going to be driven by TIF, or, I don't know the answer to that question. I believe if you want to achieve this level of economic development, there's going to have to be a public-private partnership. That means planning together, strategy together, community outreach together, and co-investment. The levels of that, it's way too soon to define that. There may be new tools that have to be created in the state to allow for something like this to happen. So that's just the reality of where we are right now. I can't answer for you to what extent TIF is or isn't a part of this strategy. It's a proven tool. It probably has a role. But my answer to that question is, goes back to what I said. My response to someone like that is, so if you choose not to invest in the community, what you're advocating for is you want to put more of that tax burden on your own shoulders going forward. It's a simple economic reality. If you don't grow and strengthen your economy, voices like that are advocating for the alternative path, which means they want to shoulder more of the burden in the future, not put some of that burden off on new drivers of economic growth. And if that's the decision that they're advocating for, then we should discuss it that way.
Great. That's good for now. Thank you.
Councilman McFadden.
Thank you, Honored. Okay, my question, you know, people have come up to me and asked me about this because they know I've been supportive of it. And they said, well, Rich, if we have this Big Sky One center downtown, and they build a hotel, want to compete with the other hotels that are already here, they put in office space, why look at these empty office spaces around town? If they put an apartment building, well, they're competing with other apartment buildings around town. Said, they're just going to come in here and compete with what's already in here. And my answer to that has been, well, a lot of people say that a rising tide will lift all boats. And, of course, I think that's what the proponents of this project or a series of projects are hoping, that this rising tide will lift all boats in the entire area. I was just wondering what your thoughts were on that.
Another great question. I'd answer it... I'd answer it somewhat the same way. You've got, you've got two courses you can be on here. If you choose to drive the growth of your economy, look at Allentown. As I said, those buildings aren't being built because there are no tenants and there are no residents. These are new people and new employers in certain respects coming into the market. These are companies investing in and growing their business. They're building their employment base. It is an economic magnet that is now building on its own success. That's just the reality of it. If you build a hotel in your downtown, you build apartment buildings, you build office space, of course it's gonna, you know, you're competing with all your neighbors. I mean, there, there's a certain reality to that I'm not going to deny. But if this is done right and you're creating the economic draw to your downtown community, which this country is moving there rapidly. So if we don't build an urban core in downtown Billings, you can't compete. You're going to lose more employment than you're going to move from one office building to the building next door. So it is really fundamental. I, I think it is this fork in the road. We're either going to ignite and grow our economy or we're going to accept that our, we have, we don't have the economic strength to build the employment base in the core of the city. And your competition, you know, if you're losing employment, you don't have to worry about is, is a tenant going to move next door? They're going to move away. And I've met with one major employer in the community that had the opportunity to grow here and at this point, they don't see a path to grow here. That's not a trend that you want too many others to follow.
All right. I, I like your answer. Personally, I believe that those who don't learn to swim seem to sink a lot, so I'm thinking...
It's a better way of saying it.
I'm all for swimming. Thank you.
Councillor Sullivan?
Lots of, lots of nautical stuff going on in Ward Three, apparently. Boats and swimming.
Oh, and you started spilling water over there.
Yeah, that's right. So, great stuff. I won't repeat what everybody else said. Just a couple, a couple of questions. So I, I'm not familiar, or, let me back that up. I, I am familiar with the concept of a NIZ. I don't know how we can or can't use it here in the state or in the city. And so I'm guessing that it would require some legislation or, or some opportunity for legislation or tweaking or what have you. So where, where that comes in is that, given this timeline right here, the implementation of this project would be right around the time that the legislature sits again unless we have some sort of God forbid, crazy fire and special session again like we, we just had. Can you give some thoughts around that or, or are they not, are they mutually exclusive? You don't necessarily have to have the, the NIZ in order to, to, to start? We, we still, I'm looking for a little color there, I guess.
You know, I guess lesson learned there is you shape these things as you go. You know, we haven't, we haven't tried to get in and evaluate, you know, what is the, what might a mechanism look like? Is it, is it something that exists already? Is it a modification to something that you have? Could it be something entirely new? I'm talking about at the state level. Don't know the answer to that yet. Big part of what we do in the next phase. And it's something we'll learn together, you know? You find out where the tolerance is for using different types of tools. There's a lot of good examples that we can bring to it. You know, I, I imagine this would take something that, that is, is probably shaping something new. It may not be a new piece of legislation or, or something like that necessarily, but there's, structurally, there's probably something that, that would have to come together that, that's not fully in place today. And how we get there, you know, it's going to take weighing a lot of alternatives and trying to find the best path to go forward that can gain the support of the community and political leadership.
And one more for me. So, question two. I, I think that the concept of, as you proposed, of a downtown event center slash convention center, I, I like that. I think that, that helps build critical mass among the project. The, the concern I guess I have, or what I'm looking for, your thoughts when you examine Billings as a community is if we, we have Metro, which is now called...
We're in Rock Auto Arena, right?
Okay. It's always the Metro when I've dealt with it. So, yeah, we have a, a large convention, arena up the street. The county owns, obviously. So, you know, are these, have you done any SWOT analysis as far as what this looks like? I mean, obviously, we're going to, this is, you're trying to gear it more towards convention, but there'll be entertainment portion to that? I, I guess I'm looking for some thoughts from you and your company as to what, what, what that looks like with the existing stuff in town already.
Let me answer that a couple of ways. Number one, I, I think there are relatively few instances where a convention center and an arena are going to be competitive with one another. And, and I could point at lots of examples around the country in cities of your size where you have an arena, a convention center, and an expo hall. In some cases, something that looks like Madison, Wisconsin, where I live, two arenas, an expo hall, and a convention center. Community not that much larger than, than Billings. So I, I, I wouldn't, you know, I'm not going to say there's never going to be a competitive factor between the two, but programmatically, there's such different buildings that draw from such different audiences. I think you'd find there's more instances where they're compatible. You know, you have a show and a convention center downtown and you need a, a venue for an event one night, you know, maybe it's a concert or something, you do it out at, at the arena. I think, I think you'll find more of those than you do instances where you're competing for the same event. I mean, your X hall, exhibit hall space that you can capture in an arena is about, you know, 15 times the size of this room. Your X hall space in a convention center is probably 400 times the size of this room. So they're just of a different size and scale. So that, that wouldn't be a big concern to me, but certainly something that we would analyze in the next phase of, of study. The more important point that I would make, and I said this earlier today in one of our meetings with, with the economic development community, I think what's most important in this convention center, if it has traction, is to build smarter. And what I mean by that is, we would strongly encourage that we follow the model that we used at Lambeau Field or Allentown as an example. What I'm getting at is, we want to find ways to make, you know, two and two equal 11. In the case of Allentown, all they wanted to build was an arena. That was, you know, when we stood in a setting like this in the very early stages, all anyone had a thought for was an arena. And we said, no, it, it can't work that way. We can't make the funding model work if all we're building is an arena. We need this economic force to come together to pay for it. And so as we got into that and we started to evolve this strategy for growing downtown Allentown, the anchoring project was, was and is an arena, but linked into that arena is an orthopedic, Lehigh Valley Health Network's Orthopedic Medical Center, a hotel, and then a retail dining entertainment platform that I mentioned earlier. The, what, what that drives is everybody's bottom line is enhanced because you're building, you know, your core program, the case of the hotel, I used this example earlier today. In the hotel, we built 200 rooms, but it is a full-service hotel. It's a full-service hotel that gets its food and beverage from the arena and the restaurants. It gets its fitness facility from Lehigh Valley, which is the finest fitness facility of any hotel I've ever stayed at. Indoor running track and things that you don't get in a hotel fitness, you know, most hotel fitness centers are a quarter the size of this room.
The size of this room.
Yeah, exactly. Lambeau Field, you know, football stadium. By definition, a football stadium is a 10-day-a-year, four-hour-a-day venue. Forty hours in a year, it's used. In most cases, today around the NFL. College football, it's even less. That's a big building and a big piece of infrastructure and a massive, more often than not, public investment. What we did at Lambeau Field is we figured out a way, as some of you have seen, to activate that building the other 355 days a year, now driving millions and millions of dollars of new tax base, massive job growth, massive economic development around the stadium, and new taxes. By building that in a way that we've unified it with other programmatic uses that are active on game day but have their own pro forma non-game day. And that's what we would, we would argue for here is concepting and building a venue that is not just a meeting and convention space, but it could be a concert hall. It could be a community pavilion. It could be a farmer's market on weekends. It could be any number of different uses. And it's what we like about convention centers is it's a big shed. We've just got to figure out how to build it smarter. I mean, if you're going to build a kitchen to feed 4,000 people for some events, there's got to be a way to use that food and beverage infrastructure better. Create a food hall that can become a great, you know, sort of cultural element of downtown Billings that defines, you know, the character of your food and beverage in this region. I don't know what the right ideas are. What I'm saying is, let's figure out a better way to capitalize and invest in that and a, a more diverse program than any other convention center in America. Let's figure out what to link into it so it's more attractive for meetings and conventions. It's a better draw for its core use. And when it's not functioning with its core use, we're still driving visitation and revenue.
So different than the Metro?
Very different than the Metro.
Councillor Swanson?
Good, exhilarating evening for me. I really appreciate you being here. Years ago, I, I spent my business career as a commercial industrial real estate agent. And we developed a company that started in Lake Marys of Oakland. And one day, a attorney for the city of Oakland came in for a meeting and he said, Al, I'd like to have you and your company get involved with a downtown project, which we call the Oakland City Center Project. It's 15 city blocks of blight and we don't have the ability to, to do the, to the job that needs to be done there. Today, it took 20 years, but we had a, well, we had several major pieces of it. High Regency Hotel, Convention Center, Wells Fargo Bank, Med, Med High Rise Office Building, American President Line Office Building, Clorox Office Building, and...
Rob and I tried to put a baseball stadium there years ago.
...of completely full shiny buildings are there today. And it sits on top of the major Bay Area Rapid Transit Station in the whole system. And I was back there, oh, about a year ago, and I went through it with a friend of mine. And from that first day of attorney meeting, it was a really exciting feeling for me to see the success we had there. And we were able to take that success and around the country get involved with just exactly what you're doing, helping other cities redevelop their communities. So it can be done and you really hit the nail on the head. So thank you.
Thank you. No, it's a, I know the project, as I said, Rob and I tried to, had a thought about working with the city to put a baseball stadium there a number of years ago. That didn't happen, but, you know, it's a, it's a great example and, and I think the punchline in that is, you know, these things don't happen by chance. It takes a plan, you know, and leadership. And that's, that's really what this discussion should be, is really all about.
One other thing, Jack London Square is about three blocks away and I all heard of Jack London. And at that time, it was just kind of a seedy little place with, on the waterfront, but pretty bad shape. And on the same trip, I went down there and it had hotels and restaurants and a whole bunch of other things on about three city blocks. And then up the other spinoff, we had, we had a lot of residential in ours too, but another spinoff was the development of a Chinatown, an Oriental Chinatown between city center and Jack London Square. So all of those were kind of fit, fit together.
Great examples.
That's all.
Councillor Brewster?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate Ryan asking my question earlier.
Sorry.
That was good, but, you know, my experience here has been that for a long time, our community just kind of cooked along. And people were semi-happy with how things were and now we're seeing like a huge demand on services. It, it appears to me it's almost exponential. And until now, I've only thought we had the same pot to go to all the time for how to fund those services. And I'm kind of excited really about looking at a way to grow our tax base without necessarily going back to the same well. And to be able to provide services in the community because of the growth of the tax base and, you know, turn it into a pretty special place, so I really am enjoying what you're saying, so.
Good.
Appreciate it.
Even let us sway here. Councillor Persson-Smino?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Dunn, you specifically presented us also with a finance plan and we haven't received the study yet, so I wrote down notes as you were providing your presentation. We appreciate that. Basically, this is a $2 billion investment for development. And you, you stated that the private investment would be $296.4 million to $318.6 million, but you're asking for a public investment of $300 million. So other than just the TIF district or this one tool, I mean, obviously, we're going to be looking at other ways to generate this type of investment from our tax base, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it.
Councillor Clark?
The next plan would show us what the public and private investment would be to start with and, and as we work through the different phases, where it would get to.
Correct.
Would it also show things like if you have a convention center? I know a lot of them take public funds to fight, keep them going after you build them if they don't pay for themselves. Will that all be in the...
It will.
...the next phase of the plan then?
It will, and, you know, that's the, that's one of the hurdles we have to work to solve is, you know, can we, can we, can we approach this with more of a profit-driven mindset? And again, I, I think we've proven ourselves in this business. You know, if you can take the project in Allentown forward and, you know, have the financial success that those projects have had, or Lambeau Field, you know, smallest team in all of sports, you know, becoming one of the dominant teams financially in the National Football League, you know, it's just, it's building smarter. It's being creative and finding different ways, you know? Buildings have, have become so expensive, I think you have to do this. You know, how can we link the lifestyle district where you're anchored by a convention center together with the medical district and find better and, you know, innovative ways to use that infrastructure and pay for that infrastructure differently? I don't have the answer tonight, but didn't have the answer when we started in Allentown or Green Bay either.
So would the, what the plan we're looking at now, would the first phase still be in the same location that we talked about before over on, for the hotel and conference center? Or is that a large enough space to, to actually do something like this?
Yes, yes and no. You know, we control a sizable piece of, of real estate. I think it's a great piece of property. As I said earlier, one of the immediate things we want to start to do is, is plan, you know, for an initial project. That's part of what we would be working on next year. I expect, you know, it's, it's gonna, it's going to involve that property. But is that property in and of itself, you know, the definition of one Big Sky Center? I think we've shown that, you know, our vision is, is much greater than that.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
You know, one other comment that I want to make, and it's, it's particularly important as, as you start to think about this, is, you know, this is not an effort that, that one company is going to take on. You know, we would hope to be involved in a couple of projects and I think where we have strength are these anchoring-type projects. That's what we'd hope to bring to Billings. That's where we would expect... to Billings. That's where we would expect to invest our capital. But alongside of us are going to be many others who will also look to participate in this. I don't know how many parties are involved in Allentown now. A lot, you know, who are, who've recognized the strength of the market has come, rents have grown. You can justify private investment. And the same thing will happen here. You know, I met with a, a development group earlier today, you know, who, who couldn't have been more positive and supportive of the approach and the idea and the effort. You know, this is a company that owns a substantial amount of office space in the city, but I think recognizes to the question earlier, you know, does this cannibalize your existing real estate? Just the opposite. It's going to, it's going to breed new life and new opportunity into the market. And that's a good thing for everybody. So, you know, it's, it's just a point that I wanted to make sure I, I made tonight that, you know, by no stretch of the imagination, do we have any belief that we're going to build 3 million square feet of anything in Billings? Would we like to be involved in a couple hundred thousand square, you know, something on that scale? Yes. And then others will, you know, will join in and, and, you know, sort of ride this wave as things get moving. And, you know, the Oakland, I mean, take any of these examples where this has occurred, it's never a one-horse race. It takes multiple interests grounded in the community that can make something like this happen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has not spoken?
Well, Mr. Dunn, I've mentioned this before. I'll say it again. I want to sincerely thank you for your effort, your delivery. And I will say that I'd like to thank, I'm fairly good at recognizing a professional. And that's how I describe you. You've done a very fine job. Very effective, very convincing. I can see people waiting to speak behind you. I don't know if it's really necessary. I think that you've said most everything there is to say. They may want to add to it, but I, the prediction would be that you gained a tremendous amount of support this evening. We have, and I've always been quick to recognize other cities and towns throughout the state of Montana. So, very proud of the state of Montana. A couple of cities that have maybe gotten a jump on us, if you wish. But one thing that will not be forgotten is, Billings has always been the biggest and the best. And this would just certainly help keep us in that position. I want to thank you. I have one regret, and I, nothing you can do about that, but I have one regret, is that I will not be sitting here when the vote comes forward. So, best of luck.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
With that, we'll open the floor for witness testimony. If you please be respectful of the time. I think we've had a very lengthy presentation. Thank you.
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you so much. And thank you, counsel. And, you know, I'm going to try not to get real mushy about you not being there for the vote, and I won't either. And it's been a real joy to, to work with all of you on this project for the number of years that we've been discussing it now. I just want to make this brief, that the alliance and our partners here with me, Steve from Big Sky Economic Development and John from The Chamber, we concur with Bob's recommendation of 60 days. I want to get my hands on one of those books, and I'd like to share it with our boards. And I know that they feel the same way, and I'm sure they'll express that to you. So, we would, we would recommend 60 days so that you can see your new leadership for your city administrator, your new mayor and council, and that we can all take that book and look at it and really work with that vision and opportunity that lies within that binder and that concept. And I want to bring up, we, we had a meeting today, as I mentioned, and Bob and Rob have been so gracious with their time. The Governor's Office of Economic Development stopped by Ken Fitchler, and he had a meeting in Billings about a business that wants to locate in Billings, Montana. I know that Steve might, might mention that. But he supports this vision, this opportunity for Billings and for the state of Montana. And he said so in front of our members. And so, we're really excited about that. I do want to mention again that transformation is not easy, and it takes committed partners. And I could not have better economic development partners in the city than in, and with Steve Arveskow and John Brewer. So, they'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Harman.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, and I'll do my best to respect your time and the time we're all investing. I do have a request, though. The battery on my phone died. Would someone call my wife and tell her that I'm at a city council meeting? I'm, I'm starting to get nervous about what she might be thinking right now. And don't mess with me on that, Councilman Ryan. I'm looking at you.
I'm just, I'm just taking it all in.
Okay. A few years ago, this city council joined an effort that John and I worked on called Billings Works. And together, we reproduced our very first State of the Workforce Report. And I don't know if you remember all the details on that report. We had several goals about alignment of education to workforce needs and talent attraction and meeting the immediate needs of our workforce. But in that report, on our goal page, was a very important phrase that we called "a strategic imperative." If we were going to meet all the rest of our workforce goals in the future, we had to make sure we paid attention to that strategic imperative. And that strategic imperative was making strategic investment in our community. So, all the other work that we would do wouldn't meet our goals if we're not focused on that strategic priority. And what you've heard tonight is a very significant opportunity to help us as a community meet that imperative that we have to, to be competitive. This has gone from a TIF project to, as you've heard, now a more comprehensive economic development strategy for building up the core of our community. That requires organizations like Big Sky Economic Development to roll up our sleeves also with you and understand, well, what does this mean to us? What does it mean as Al and others, as you would understand, Mike? What does it mean in terms of us coming alongside the city and working in a partnership role? So, we're going to need 60 days at least to make sure we clearly understand that. I'll have to have conversations with my board so they understand the commitment of, of our time and talent, resources, other things toward this end. I would, I would thank this council for being patient throughout this entire process. These things do not happen overnight. They take a lot of time. And the best example I can use, I, I learned about the GE Capital Project, April 15th of 2015. We didn't close a new deal with Zoot until July of 2017. This is much more complex than that, although I got a lot of gray hairs through that process. So, your continued patience as we work through this process together as a community is really, really very important. Lastly, I want to just leave you with this. I spent the weekend, the last several days, Friday, Saturday, in Rochester, Minnesota. And I spent all day Friday studying this Destination Medical Center concept. I had the opportunity to meet with the executive director, Lisa Clark, for just a brief moment. We talked about what's going on in that community. And then I spent the rest of the day kind of snooping around that community, taking pictures of the various projects that are coming out of the ground now and have come out of the ground over the last handful of years resulting from this project. I can say, Bob, you and your team have a lot of respect in that community for the work that you've done in Rochester. And I'm not suggesting we are Rochester, Minnesota. There are many things that are similar, but many important things that are different about our communities. What I am saying is that it takes a real team to work really hard with some dedicated developers in this community to turn a project that's paper into projects coming out of the ground. And that's what I saw in Rochester, Minnesota. I would leave you with this final thought. I'm saying all this because I think we have a lot to consider as a community. I know our organization does. But we have some real opportunities if we do this right. So, having that extra time at, at your pleasure will be very important for us. Bob really has provoked our sense as a community to think bigger than we even thought ourselves. And for that, Bob, I'm, I'm very thankful. And I want to offer just one other thing for you. Don't forget why we're doing this. And so, I would encourage you to tape this to this podium. So, as you consider this issue in the future, you realize that as a community, in the next decade, we need to fill 32,500 jobs. 24,000 of them, as I've shared with you in the past, are because folks will be retiring. The others will be as new job growth. Keep this number in front of you. That's why you're going through this effort. That's why you're staying up till 10:30 at night. That's why this room is packed with the people that they are. That's why this thing is not an easy undertaking. But don't lose sight of the why we're doing it. It's to address this long-term economic opportunity for our community. So, with that said, I just encourage the additional time for all of us to do the analysis and all of us to focus on meeting this objective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arveskow.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to take a moment, John Brewer at the Billings Chamber of Commerce, to thank the HAMSS Group for their investment in time and money in Billings. To arrive at the set of vision documents that they presented today would normally cost a city and economic development organization, a chamber, a downtown association, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get what we have today. And we paid exactly zero. So, to Rob and Bob, we thank you for getting us this far. And as Steve had said, sparking the vision and excitement back in, in our community on this project. Our Board of Directors at The Chamber is very excited and supports this 60-day process and the district strategy with full enthusiasm. This really is a statewide and regional driver for the economy, especially with the convention center as the anchor for private development. You may have been to Portland and seen their Oregon State Convention Center. Seattle has the Washington State Convention Center. Both are supported by state government as regional economic drivers. Billings should have something of that magnitude in our state. We should be the leader in that field. Did want to mention that every other year, I think you know, we do at The Chamber, we coordinate an aspirational city visit and leadership exchange. Last time, we went to Oklahoma City. Two years before that, we went to Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And we explore the city, but we also examine endeavors within that city in which we can learn. And last month, our Board of Directors chose Allentown, Pennsylvania, as our next city to visit. And this will occur in May, and you'll all be receiving an invitation to participate in that. We're looking at taking a large group there to learn. We're looking forward to meeting with the district leaders in Pennsylvania. And we want to learn about their development model and their work with the HAMSS Company. We think we're going to learn some things about their unique funding mechanisms and how they successfully passed the NIS through the legislature, a program that I don't believe existed before this project came to fruition. So, in the essence of time, I know that there are a number of people in the audience tonight that might want to offer some comments. But again, in the essence of time, I definitely like all of them that are here supporting this project, just to take a moment to stand up so you can see the support for this, this endeavor for our city. So, great numbers. So, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer, if you would, for just a moment, please. Counselperson Smino have a question?
Yes, thank you. Just, just to compare Oklahoma City with Billings, tell us again the population. Is it 600,000?
I think it might be a little larger than that. Right.
And they have a sales tax, correct?
They have what they call a MAPS program, Metro Area Projects, which equates to a local option authority that we've been seeking that we think would be a fantastic solution to this endeavor as well.
And you think it's worth another try, try with our state representatives, go for another local option tax measure?
Well, I think there's a lot of tools that we need to look at, whether it is a NIS model, a local option authority, expansion of, or bringing back the lodging tax funds that now go into the general fund at the state, bringing them back locally for tourism infrastructure projects. I think there's a list of tools that are out there that we need to be strategizing about and speaking with one voice to our delegation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
If you would, please, Mr. Brewer. Yes, Counselman Clark?
But Oklahoma City has a state sales tax, too, that they put this on top of, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, they already had the framework to do it when they put the local option tax in place?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
Thank you, Mayor.